Yeah, this microphone. Okay, I'm fresh. Yeah, I got, uh, I got my little yellow bar, that's good.
So this faucet, and then put it in.
Yeah, as soon as we're done buffering.
It's okay.
Still buffering.
Good morning. Man, two, two too, and also we got, we both got the same memo, I see.
We just were separate, though.
You didn't get the red tide memo, though.
You know, I had it on my hand, but I don't like to get it either. My hand went on the table this morning about noon. I'm wearing tan pants and a little yellow board.
I need your mental issue. Oh, I think you're wearing a...
I guess you must have got somebody riled up yesterday.
Really, I was really beating.
Oh, he, he, I was a little hot.
Yeah, I could tell you were, but I didn't know what it was about. I see still, still on the radio this morning, so I understand, I was kind of, I got kind of antsy at the meeting, and I'm thinking, oh, I don't remember any particular, I mean, I knew that was a private thing, too, not as far as the meeting was going.
You handled it well.
There, I guess he went on the blog or Facebook city.
Number 21st.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisory Meeting. If you'd please stand and join me in our flag salute, remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Our first item this morning is a presentation regarding the Tulare County Drug Court, Adult Drug Court Program, and we're happy to have Judge Roper here this morning. He's been the leader and number-one fan of the, and we all agree with him, it's been a tremendous program, but, I mean, really Judge Roper, I can't say enough about your efforts to make this system be so successful. Thank you for being here this morning.
Well, thank you. I, now, can you see what I've got up here? There we go, all right. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you for a few minutes, and I want to talk about what I think is a real success in government that we are having, and I'm pleased to say that the reason we're having that success is because we're working together to make it happen. This isn't something that's thundered down from above, it's really, it's grown from the grass, and we've refined and honed it until I think it's something now that works very, very well. There's basically four ways of handling drug cases, I'll just go over a couple of them real quickly. One is what's called deferred interim judgment, or used to be called drug diversion, and it's designed for first-time drug offenders, it basically is a real lightweight series of classes, and I'm sure it does some good. Second is incarceration. As you know, that up until, well, when I took the bench 20 years ago, that's what we did, is incarcerate people, and I'm sure you're well aware of how expensive that is, and beyond being expensive, for people that are addicted to drugs, it is very ineffective. You simply cannot punish people out of drug use if they are addicted. I didn't, quite frankly, believe in, I don't know if I, I didn't understand and believe in addiction 20 years ago like I do now. Addiction is a very real state, physically based, it's a brain disorder, and it is compelling, and it does little good to incarcerate people who are addicted and expect them to come out better, because they won't when they come out. The third thing is called the Recovery Court. It was passed in 2000 as Proposition 36. We implemented here in Tulare County as the Recovery Court rather than just Proposition 36. We wanted it to have some meaning, even in the name. It's a law that I think is very poorly written, I think it was designed to fail. Statewide, about 24% of the people that be, that are sent to the program finish it. It was funded for five years by the legislature, or by, well, not by the legislature, by the proposition itself, it required funding for five years, and it was so poorly designed that the legislature at that point in time said, we're gonna, we're gonna change it, and they did some things to fix it. The court in Sacramento then struck that down as violating the proposition, and the legislature reacted by simply unfunding it completely. So for the past few years, it's been completely unfunded. Many counties have reacted to that, some counties have reacted to it by saying, all right, we're just not gonna do anything about it, which has de facto made drug use and possession legal or decriminalized in those counties. The proposition said that jail or incarceration cannot be a part of the probation terms, and if somebody qualifies for it, they can't be punished, and since there's no treatment there, in a lot of counties, they just walk. We did not want to do that. We feel like we owed something to the citizens of this county, the addicted people, to help them if we can, and the rest of the people to protect them. We know that drug users are much more likely to commit other crimes. And so the court, together with the probation department, the Health and Human Services Agency, and the public defender, has worked together to try and do the best we can with it. We send people to treatment, they have some supervision by the probation department, and they are tested regularly. It is inadequate, there is not enough supervision, there's not enough treatment, but we do what we can. And some people have come up to me on the street and said, hey, I was in Recovery Court six or seven, 10 years ago, and I've been clean and sober ever since. We have about the same rate of compliance as the rest of the state, about a quarter of the people we send to it actually finish the program. I don't like it, I'm hopeful that the legislature at some time will recognize, they either have to get rid of it, which would be very difficult to do, because it has to be by public vote, or fund it, at least minimally. But for now, it is the law, we have to comply with it, and we do the best we can, and some people are helped by it. The final approach is, of course, my favorite, no surprise there, the Drug Court. When we started the Drug Court 15 years ago, it was with the thought that we do not want to be a burden on taxpayers. Taxpayers already have too many burdens. And so our thought was, let's start it and have it self-sufficient. It is a collaboration between the court, the district attorney, the public defender, the probation department, Health and Human Services Agency, the sheriff, global drug testing, and treatment providers, who provide the actual treatment, and I've listed there some of the treatment providers that participate in the program. From a case processing standpoint, it's a very efficient way to handle drug cases. People plead guilty going in, so you don't have trials, you're not paying for witnesses, for analysts, for the police to come and sit and testify for juries. All that goes away because the people plead guilty to it. From a probation standpoint, it's very efficient, because we don't have to have the lengthy probation reports that otherwise would be present for felony cases. In fact, several years ago, we, the probation department did an analysis and determined they would need four to six additional probation officers just to do the reports that we do in a standard form with the Drug Court. People are released from jail sooner, they're not sitting in jail, which is reduced cost directly to the county, and those that enter the Drug Court and ultimately fail out of it are sentenced under the same standard rules as anybody else. We don't punish people for going into the Drug Court and trying it, on the other hand, we don't reward them for trying it and not succeeding. We expect people to succeed, and so if they violate out, they just receive the same punishment as they would have received had they not even tried it. As I said, it is set up to be self-sustaining, we expect the clients or participants in the Drug Court to pay for the treatment. I didn't quite frankly believe that was gonna work, but it does work. We have at any given time four to 600 people in the Drug Court, they are flipping burgers, raking leaves, cleaning floors, whatever they have to do to make the minimal amount of money necessary, and it costs about $70 a week for them to participate. That doesn't sound like much to some people, but for the people in this lowest stratum of society, it's very, very difficult, and they work very hard to do it. Our theory, and I think it's been borne out, is that people will value their recovery to the extent that they invest in it, and I think that we have a very high rate of recovery, because people have to invest themselves in it and have to work and struggle in order to make it work. They get, for, if they're in outpatient treatment, and almost everybody starts in outpatient treatment, they get two groups a week, group counseling sessions of an hour and a half, a one-hour individual counseling session, they're expected to participate in 12-step fellowships, one of which can be a faith or religious-based, if they are so oriented to that. They're tested frequently, an average of two and a half times a week randomly, they have to call every day. We expect them to wake up in the morning, and the first thing they do is think, what do I need to do to be in recovery today? First thing they have to do is call and see if they have to go test that day, and if their number comes up, they have to go in and test, and they pay the cost of testing. There's no lim, no limit to the number of participants. I've visited drug courts in 26 states, and many of them have 10 or 15 participants, because that's all that they can afford, because it's publicly funded. We don't have any such strictures. The more people that we get in, all we have to do is add more counselors, and so we've, as I've said, grown to four to 600 people at any time. There's three phases, and it takes a minimum of 18 months to get out, although most people take about 22 months to get through it. Quite frankly, it's really difficult to quit using drugs, and we expect them, in the very early stages, to have occasional drug use episodes. Some people, and I'm not sure, it's between 5 and 10%, I think, simply can't do it without residential treatment, and so using the existing residential treatment facilities, we send those people for a residential stint in treatment, and then when they finish that, they come out and are expected to finish in the outpatient treatment. One of the things that we implemented a couple of years ago, which I think is just really exciting, is a new way of testing for alcohol. We used to do breath alcohol tests, but I don't know if you know this or not, but you can get drunk tonight and tomorrow morning test clean with breath alcohol, it dissipates from the system very rapidly. And the treatment people were telling me, half the people are drinking. I didn't believe that, quite frankly, I knew some people were, but because we have no probation officer to go and do home visits, we just weren't able to find out the people that were drinking alcohol. The testing agency, Global Drug Testing, came to me in October of 2008 and said, we've come up with a new way, it's, it's called ethyl glucuronide testing, it's ETG as a shorthand. It's a metabolite of ingesting ethyl alcohol, and rather, you can see from the graph, if you're testing actual alcohol, which is the yellow line there, it's a period of hours. ETG remains in the system for up to four days. And so suddenly, we were able to determine over a long length of time whether someone was drinking alcohol. When we first instituted that in October of 2008, as you can see from the graph, it just shot up, and we, I realized the treatment people were telling me the truth. Lot of people, maybe up to half the people, were drinking alcohol. It's real tough when you're drinking alcohol to try and be in recovery. It's kind of like me being too fat and not wanting to eat cookies anymore, and so I eat donuts and pie instead. You just can't substitute one thing for another and make it work. Once people realize that we are testing for alcohol consumption, as you can see from the graph, it went down, 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 until we have now about the same rate of positive tests as we did before, but we have a much higher belief in the validity of what we're really testing. Many of the Drug Court people have told me since then, thank you for figuring out how to help me stop drinking. The compulsion is so great, I just couldn't stop, and now I can, no, I can't get away from that either. I don't know if this comes as a surprise or not, but we generally don't punish people for using drugs in the Drug Court. It's a treatment-oriented program, and if they are doing, if they're complying with the treatment, but they have occasional drug use, we don't punish them. Number one, it doesn't work to punish them, I think we've proven that over the last 100 years. It engenders undesirable side effects, it makes, if they're doing the best they can, and they have a slip and use, it makes them hostile, they may abandon the treatment, say, what the heck, they may develop what's called learned helplessness, where they say, I'm doing the best I can, no matter what I do, I can't succeed, and they just learn that they can't respond to any opposition. It's very expensive to put people in custody, as you know, and quite frankly, it isn't necessary. Most people in the Drug Court will struggle with it, they're supervised closely, and if we give them the adequate treatment, they just don't need to be punished. What we use chiefly is rewards. I'm a firm believer in what my father used to tell me when I was a kid. You get more flies with honey than you do with vinegar, and I didn't really, I didn't internalize that until I became my father, but people, in fact, respond to rewards. Now, ultimately, the best reward is sobriety. The life of a drug user is just living hell, and they hate it, and they want to get out, but they can't. The life of a clean and sober person is much better, and that's its own reward, but along the way, we provide little rewards to them, from bars of soap, shampoo, t-shirts, keychains, mugs, pens, pencils, free drug tests, whatever we can come up with to reward them for compliance and sobriety, and people do very well with that. You can force people to do almost anything by punishing them, but as soon as the punishment stops, then they return to their prior behavior. We do punish in some instances, such as failing to test, if they're not attending treatment, obviously, that's a behavior problem. If they're rude or dishonest, if they lie about things, if they threaten other participants, if they get a new offense, those would all be things where we'd impose some punishment, but not for drug use if they are complying. I think that the cost savings to the county and the state is incredible, if you calculate it. This year, we've had 207 people, by far the biggest group we've ever had, that will potentially graduated by October 28th, which is our graduation date. We have about a 5% recidivism every year versus a 75% recidivism from the Department of Corrections, and that's their number. When you send people to prison, 75% are back within a year and a half. The people that graduated this year will have paid over $1 million for treatment and testing, that's their cost, that's not taxpayer cost, and if you figure that it costs about $50,000 to put people in prison, which is what I think the Department of Corrections says, that's over $14 million in incarceration savings alone. Now, that assumes that the average person in the Drug Court will spend 16 months in prison, some of them would spend 108 days, nine months in the county jail, some of them would spend five, six years. But I think 16 months is a very conservative estimate, and a lot of that would be county money that you would otherwise pay to have them in the county jail. Even with the 5% recidivism rate, you're talking over $13 million in savings just in incarceration alone, and that doesn't calculate the savings that I talked about from trials, from testimony, from them committing new offenses, the medical care, people on drugs cost a whole lot more to the public for medical care. Juvenile court, we've had a lot of people get their kids back in the course of the Drug Court, where we get them out of the juvenile system and reunite the families. The, the reason this works is that, as I said, all these groups are working together. We've refined it, we've tweaked it, and I think we have a very, very good program. In fact, our program has been asked by many different places to come and teach them. I took three vacation days last week to fly to Philadelphia, because the Philadelphia Drug Court asked me to come out there and talk about the way that we do it. I'm very, Judge Paden and I are very, very grateful to your employees who are working with us very effectively. The probation department, the Health and Human Services Agency, the public defender, all participate regularly in our steering committee and help us do it right. In particular, let me just mention two people. I'm very grateful to Kristi Meyer of the probation department, and Dr. Cheryl Dirksen from the Health and Human Services Agency, who I think are showing that when someone has their eye on the ultimate goal of helping people and not just forming little empires, a government works very, very well and is very efficient. I thought about, in closing, bringing a participant or a graduate to talk to you and give a testimony, but rather than do that, I thought my time would be better used, to invite you once again to the Drug Court Graduation Ceremony on October 28th. I think, well, most of you have been there, I don't know if you're supervisor, have you been there before? Okay. As I said, we have potentially 207 graduates on the stage this year. Paul Williams, our speaker last year, just sent me an email this week and described it as the Mount Everest of Drug Court graduations. It's a real celebration of recovery, not just for the Drug Court, but for all people in the county who are in recovery, and I hope you'll be there. I sent you an email yesterday with an address, I don't know if you've looked at it or not, but address from the administrative office of the courts, a website where they actually showed our graduation ceremony as an example of a real achievement. And Peter Torque from the Monkeys is gonna be the speaker this year, very talented man who's also very invested in recovery, and I think that he'll be well worth hearing, and so I invite everybody here, as well as each of you on the stand, to come and participate with us. Any questions that I could answer?
Any questions? Comments?
Oh, just think it's a great program, and keep it up, because I've already sent my RSVP in for the graduation, I'll be there.
Great. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to talk to you for a few minutes.
Thank you for being here, appreciate very much your program and for your, your hard work and efforts, and more power to you, thank you.
I've got people waiting, so I'm gonna head back to the salt mines.
Thanks for coming over. Our second item is a presentation given by Joe Schultz and Julio Perez with Watch Systems LLC, who recognize and award recipients from the Sheriff's Department for their contributions to the program. Good morning. Are they here? You can use either microphone.
Thank you very much. It is a proud day when, in law enforcement, when you can recognize your peers in law enforcement, because we hear so much nowadays of more negatives than we do positives. I represent Watch Systems, which provides Offender Watch software, and I thought it would be prudent if I give you a little background about what we provide, not only to Kern County, but across the United States, and then go right into the more formal presentations.
And I assume you provide Tulare County as well? You said Kern, so...
Absolutely. If you'll allow me. Basically, what we do is we offer Offender Watch, which is our software, seamless information sharing, collaboration between local law enforcement and prosecution. The results are dramatic, increased convictions for registration violations, reduced time and cost to pursue and prosecute violators, and to provide citizens an oriented agency, personalized community webpage. Over 1,000 jurisdictions in 39 states, including 13 statewide implementations, use Offender Watch. District attorneys, US attorneys partner with law enforcement to establish a prosecutor's protocol, minimum standards of data collection, which ensure the critical data necessary for successful prosecution is collected in a consistent and uniform manner. Local law enforcement collects and maintains a robust database through their efforts in registering offenders and verifying compliance. Offender Watch fully supports the district attorney's data requirements pertaining to address, history, offender intelligence, verification history, required documentation, and supervise, supervision history, excuse me. The US Attorney, District Attorney, and United States Marshal Service receive automatic notification that will include the violation alert, full offender file, historical management and supervision notes, facilitates faster warrant procurement, and a more successful prosecution process. Offender Watch, in its own right, is an internet-based and facilitates multi-jurisdictional information sharing, cooperation between not only the Sheriff's Department, but police departments, United States Marshal Service, District Attorney, US Attorney, state police, probation, and parole, and other professionals, enabling all agencies to contribute, consume information about offenders according to local guidelines, so all management partners know everything they need to know about all offenders. Basically, we continue and we try to enforce collaboration between all the agencies to enrich the information that is put into the system. Alerts and notifications are automated, are automated component of Offender Watch, they're proven to dramatically reduce the time, effort, and expense of locating and prosecuting non-compliant sex offenders. That kind of gives you a little roadmap in US, from a US base to a California base. Currently in California, we have 50 agencies that are participating, which includes 22 counties, obviously, we have another 32, if my count is correct, that we are in process of converting to the software. But the ultimate goal, gentlemen and ladies, is, is to let you know that in Kern County and the Sheriff's Department, that collaboration and the recognition that is about to be presented is at its utmost highest quality. Our company, and our founder, and our president, we give out achievement awards in a very frugal manner. We here, I am here today, Julio Perez, my partner Joel Schultz, did not make it, have found four of the most unbelievable users of Offender Watch across the country, and we don't, like I said, give these out very frivolously. So without, I would like to, before I bring each of the individuals up, is to give my personal thanks to, obviously, Sheriff Whitman, under Sheriff Dahl Kleek, the District Attorney, Mr. Phil Klein, and within the department, we are, that would be Lieutenant Rob Schimpf. I would like to, now without further ado, call each of the four individuals that we are recognizing from our company as a certificate for outstanding achievement in the use of Offender Watch for the benefit of the community and for the benefit of law enforcement in maintaining a strong commitment to keeping the sex offenders in check, which is a very difficult process, as you all know. The first person I'd like to recognize, if you would step forward, Ms. Isla Marsh.
If you wouldn't mind, Isla, if I could embellish, if you could stand here, and we'll get everybody up here and hold an applause to the end, I think would be prudent. Ms. Lisa Brown. Sergeant Steve Kennedy. I've just been corrected that I went calling the wrong county. It must be my Spanish heritage, or Scottish heritage, perhaps. The last person is Detective CJ Porter. Ladies and gentlemen, achievement award winners for Offender Watch, your community service officers at work.
officers at work. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, for coming here.
Apologies, I will be in Kern tomorrow, so I'll probably say Tullary there.
It's a pleasure to have you in Tullary County today, sir. Thank you, and congratulations to our folks in Tullary County, the Sheriff's Office, for being recipients of these awards today, and your service is noted not only by this organization, but also, I'm sure, by the Sheriff's Department and the county as well. Thank you for being here today, all of you. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the board this morning on items which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are encouraged to come forward at this time and give us your Seeing no one come towards the mic, ah, yes, we have one in the back, sir, come forward, Either microphone will work.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board this morning. I will be speaking to item number 13, and that is a request.
Well, sir, what I will do is I'll give you a chance, when we come to that item, we'll take it off our consent calendar, and we'll let you speak to it at that time, if that's all right.
Oh, okay.
This is for the items that are not on our agenda this morning, so we'll pull that and let you speak to it at that time. Anybody else wishing to address this morning? Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment period and then bring it to the board, board comments, and I'll start to my left this morning, Mr. Vanderpoel.
I just have one thing I'd like to bring up, and that is just that there is an event this Saturday, which is separate from our campaign that we are launching here in Tullary County. We have launched the Taste Tullary County Campaign. The Farm Bureau is putting on an event, and it's called Bounty of the County. That event is going to be held on Saturday at 2:00 PM at the Ritchie Barn, and that event is going to showcase produce and products grown here locally that we can all be proud of and we can all enjoy. So I encourage as many people to attend as possible and really see the fruit of Tullary County labor.
Cox?
I have nothing. I appreciate it.
Saturday, Supervisor Vanderpoel and I attended the Pops in the Park, put on by the Tullary County Symphony, and it was a wonderful event. We have a new director, and this is his second, and I would encourage people to come to the Tullary County Symphony. The programs are very good. So that's all I have.
Strennis?
Yesterday, we had our second planning meeting for the Step Up Summit in Terabella, DuCor, Rich Grove area. It's moving forward very well. We've got a lot of people involved. It'll be October 19th is the date we've set for that event, and looking forward to that. Thank you.
Good. Well, my Saturday was spent in Sacramento, gathering my oldest son getting married, so it was a very pleasant event, and they're off on their honeymoon now. And this coming Saturday is the National Raisin Festival in Dinuba, and I'd like to invite you all to come to our, be a parade at 10 o'clock in the morning, and festivities in the park all day. So a busy day and busy weekend in Dinuba. So with that, we'll move.
Mr. Sheriff, if anyone, I was waiting for Mr. Ennis. If I can, remind him, last week, we did have a loop workshop in the city of Porterville, and that resulted in no less than eight applications from that area for the loop bus.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to our consent calendar very quickly before we take up our timed items. Item number eight, we will handle separately. Number 11, we will handle separately, and number 13, we will handle separately. There is one addendum item, and if there's nothing else to be moved, handled separately, requested by the public or the board, I will entertain a motion. Motion approved.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. We'll take up item number eight.
Item number eight is a, it's actually kind of a joyous occasion to be recognizing a business who located here in Tullary County, specifically in my district, down in the community of Tipton. They located here, I think, last year, and opened up an auction facility at the current Martella Auction Barn. They took over that space on a lease, and now, because of such success down in that area, they're looking for a permanent location in Tullary. And on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, I would like to recognize them and present them with a proclamation this morning to honor them for locating here in Tullary County. We very much appreciate their choosing to stay here. Every auction that they have throughout the year tend to bring anywhere from 800 to 1,200 people to Tullary County. Those are folks that fill up with gas here, they eat at the restaurants, they stay at our hotels, and that's very important to our economy here in Tullary County and definitely the economy of the city that I represent, and that's the city of Tullary. I don't have any control of any of the arrangements that they have with the city of Tullary, and they will deal with later on this evening, but on behalf of the county and where we do have control and where we do come from, I sure thank them for choosing to stay located here and would like to, at this time, present them with a proclamation honoring them for their service. So Seth and Scott, would you like to join me up front? I hope you had safe travels getting here this morning. I hear you came all the way from Canada. Ritchie Brothers is based out of Canada, so thank you for coming. I appreciate it, and this proclamation does say a few things. I won't read all of the complete information here, but typically, your auctions generate five to 10 full-time employees, additional 25 to 75 part-time employees. Employment is very important to our county, especially during this tough economic time. And each, during 2012, the first year you're proposed to be located at this spot, it is anticipated that you will generate $5.7 million in revenue to Tullary County, and that's very important as well. So without further ado, I won't continue to read it all, the wherethes and wherfore's, but we do thank you for choosing to locate here and look forward to your continued presence in Tullary County.
You too. I appreciate the support. Looking forward to calling this home for many years to come.
Good luck. Have a good ceremony.
Thank you, Supervisor Vanderpoel. Item number 11.
Mr. Chairman, that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move approval of that item. Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And now we've moved to item number 11, which is.
Just a separate vote, no report.
Oh, okay. Entertain a motion, item 11. Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Ashida. Please cast your votes. Votes are four to one. Cox, in a no, motion passes. And that will bring us then to item number 13. I apologize, that really wasn't on our consent calendar, it was an untimed item, so before the gentleman comes to speak, we'll have a staff report first on this item. Morning, Fred.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. My name is Fred Bruselas. I'm with the RMA Planning Branch, and I'm here this morning to present an item for your consideration, and that's to support a farm land conservation grant and also to consider a one-time fee for establishment of that grant. I did provide the clerk with the additional page of my PowerPoint presentation, so I hope you got that, and we'll be getting to it in just a moment. Also, I would like to just make a clarification and correction in the staff report, and just clarify that the American Farm Land Trust is the entity that will purchase the land, and it is the Sequoia Riverlands Trust that will hold the easement. So in the staff report and the resolution, there may have been some confusion about that, but that's the correct entities to hold the easement and to purchase the land. Okay, thank you. Sorry for the technical inconvenience, but the American Riverlands Trust and the Sequoia Riverlands Trust is seeking a resolution of support on a piece of property that is adjacent to the city of Kingsburg, and the total land area is about 89 acres, but majority of that land is in the county of Fresno, and they are supporting the creation of the land conservation contract. In Tullary County, there's about seven and three-quarters acres of the land, and that's the land that we're concerned about this morning. This is a depiction of the location of the property. The red diagonal that you see on the graphic is the separation of Fresno County and Tullary County. As you can see in the yellow circle, there's a dark green area. That triangle piece that's a dark green area is in the Tullary County jurisdiction, and the balance of the property is in Fresno County. So that's the piece of land that we're looking at, and we're directly east of the city of Kingsburg. On June 29th, the board did receive a report from staff regarding this conservation easement, and also recommendation for a cost recovery with regard to the oversight the county would have on administering the easement and the establishment of the easement. The board directed the staff to come back with a one-time fee for your review and consideration, and as you may recall, the staff has suggested perhaps an annual type of fee to be encumbered on the property, but after discussion by the board, the board thought a one-time fee would be the appropriate way to proceed with this. So we're simply asking the board to support the creation of the conservation easement, and we're asking you to support the application submittal, and we're also asking that you consider a one-time fee in the amount of $1,162.50. That's based upon $150 an acre times the 7.75 acres as a one-time fee. In consulting other adjoining counties, we only had one county that did have a particular fee, and as we understand it, is an amount of about $650, and I think that was from Kings County, that may have required a fee for establishment of the conservation land.
Fred, you know, excuse me, was that a one-time fee?
Yes, that's correct, a one-time fee. Now, this particular calculation is an arbitrary calculation. It's $150 per acre, and we're trying to find something reasonable. In the report that staff has prepared, you'll find that there is a cost to the county on the loss of property taxes each year. That account on this particular piece of property, about $30 an acre per year. That would be the cost to the county, and there's an estimated cost that to administer it on an annual basis, it would be about $120. So we add the $30 of the property tax loss with the $120 administrative cost, we have about $150 a year to the cost to the county of Tullary. That's one particular way of looking at the fee that's being requested. What I did pass out earlier on, and I hope you have a copy of this, is an alternative you can also consider, and that is an amount that's less or more than we had suggested. What I have presented here for you is simply a tabulation of looking at $30 per acre, which is the property tax revenue loss, times the acreage, and that comes out to about $232 a year. That would be the cost to the county for the establishment of the agricultural easement, conservation. And looking over a period of years, you can see that item A, in five years, it's about $1,162, and you can see 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and 25 years, as this would accumulate to the cost of the county. So we're asking you to look at an amount that's equivalent to about five years' loss of the tax revenue as a one-time fee. And of course, this is a matter that the board will want a way to see the difference between the value of establishing the conservation grant and the value it has in agriculture with regard to the cost that would be incurred by the county on a tax loss basis. So that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, concludes my presentation to you. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question for you, Fred. You know, you mentioned that Kings County was the only county that had the one-time fee.
Yes.
In your research, did you find any other counties that did have recurring fees for these conservation easements?
No, sir, I did not. I did not.
Fox?
Back to Kings County, was that a per-acre fee or a flat fee?
That was a flat fee.
So one acre or 1,000 acres, flat fee?
That's correct.
Fresno have a fee?
No.
And you know what the purchase price of the land was?
I do not.
There may not have actually been a purchase price, or may have been a purchase of a conservation easement, or a benefit. I don't know, it might have been a tax benefit or something.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spear, Scott Spears, in the audience, came up earlier, and I'm sure that he might be able to have some particulars with regard to property values and other aspects as well.
I wanted to ask you a little bit, on the administrative costs, there's a recurring cost, we're saying, of $120 per year?
That was communicated to me by the assessor's office.
And would that be similar to the question asked by Mr. Cox, would that be the same cost if it were seven acres or 7,000 acres?
Yes.
It's just a cost of what we have to do to deal with this particular kind of a piece of property regardless of the parcel size?
That is correct. It is a fixed cost to administer regardless of the acreage.
All right, okay. One thought, and we're going to allow the other gentleman to speak, but one thought that comes to my mind is that I think the one-time fee is something which is, has benefits because you pay it one time and you're done. Given the fact that we have ongoing costs and so forth, which by themselves are not that great, it might be to the advantage of people to pay an annual assessment rather than pay a one-time fee. It may be difficult to come up with this amount of money at one time, and that would certainly be an option, I guess, for the board to look at also today.
I have one follow-up question, and I've heard this, but I don't remember. Is this going to be taken off the tax roll so that there's zero property taxes paid on this property?
No, there will be property taxes, but the difference will be the $30 per acre.
That would reflect, I'm assuming, the conservation easement has taken away some of the value of the property.
That's correct.
And that value that's lost is the lost tax.
That's correct.
Okay. Devalue, that's what I was trying to remember.
Yes.
Any comments, questions over on this side?
No, I answered my question.
Very good.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
And now I'd love to hear from our person here this morning. The two of you, yes, good, and you can use this microphone, and also you can raise that up, that's fine.
Thanks.
Whole podium's got a button.
Whole podium goes up too. All right, who would like to go first?
I'm Sophie Mulholland, I'm the Executive Director of Sequoia Riverlands Trust. Good morning, gentlemen, and thank you for taking the time to take this off the consent agenda and listen to us, I appreciate it.
Actually, it wasn't on our consent agenda, I misspoke. It was on our untimed item, so you're fine.
Okay, thank you. We wanted to come before you to say that as a partner with you and the Rural Valley Lands Act, we want to work to conserve conservation. So in order to do that, we've worked really closely with the state to be able, in certain instances such as this one, to bring state money in to be able to pay for that easement. In other instances, a property owner could simply donate an easement, and we wouldn't be looking for your support. And in this case, this particular family's been waiting nine years to be able to put this property into an easement. And if you take the $1,200 as a one-time fee for seven acres, it sets a precedent that we're really concerned about because that kind of a calculation would take us out of the ballpark in most instances for putting family farms into conservation permanently. So, you know, there's been consideration by other communities in the valley that value agriculture to say, you know, if you can do conservation easements and make it work for the families, we want to support that because we believe in our agriculture, and they waive fees. And so to have Tullary County, which is the home of the best agriculture in the United States, sort of start charging for that. States, sort of start charging for that, is a big concern to us because we want to be partners in conserving what we can and bringing the money to town to be able to do that. And I know Scott has some comments as well.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Scott Spear. I'm Chairman of the Board of Sequoia Riverlands Trust. It's nice to be here this morning and able to speak to this. Of course, I recognize that the staff supports the adoption of the resolution to accept the easement. Our major concern, as Sophie spoke to, is the precedent of a fee of this nature. I've talked with a statewide consultant by the name of Tom Scharfenberger, who does conservation easements, he's a contractor, and he helps all the counties in the state do conservation easements, write them, and there is no other county in the state that charges fees for conservation easement, other than Kings County, the one-time fee. And that fee, by the way, was for five-hundred, for one-hundred-and-fifty-three acres, not seven acres or a small amount. If indeed this precedent were set, it would ultimately spell the end of farmland conservation because of financial restrictions in the county of Tulare. We would, again, like to be partners with you and working to the goal of, within the county's general plan, to conserve agricultural land in the county and the Rural Valley Lands Plan, both speak to conserving California agriculture in Tulare County. We want to partner with you in accomplishing that goal, so I appeal to you to adopt the resolution and choose an alternative to a reasonable fee, one-time fee, that we would be able to pay to go forward in the future to conserve farmland in Tulare County. And I'm happy, Sophie and I are happy to answer any questions.
Fox?
So either one, you mentioned state money or property being placed in the conservation easement by landowners. Any money change hands on this, was property purchased?
Well, first of all, let me clarify that the state funds will go directly to the landowner to purchase their development rights. It'll pass through American Farmland Trust, but the easement will be held by Sequoia Riverlands Trust, and we will monitor it in perpetuity. So that land, that money will go to the farmer.
Okay, and it was how much?
You know what, I don't know what the amount of that.
Do you know, did you pay an application fee to have this processed by our staff?
Pardon me?
Did you pay an application fee to have this processed by our staff? No, Fred says no, okay, thank you.
I will point out also in the staff report, this seven-point-seven-five acres is very close to Kingsburg and is subject to development as small parcel, and this would put it in a conservation easement and would no longer be eligible for a small parcel development. And if it did go to development, that would require county services, and Agland does not require county services and actually returns tax money to the county.
Well, this is a very unique piece of property because most of it's in Fresno County, a small portion of it's in Tulare County, which is one of the reasons why I supported the project to begin with. I have a concern about conservation easements in general in farm properties because we already have the Williamson Act contracts, we have the Rural Valley Lands Plan in Tulare County, we have plenty of other ways of protecting agricultural properties, but in this case, because the majority of the property was in Fresno County, I supported putting this piece of property into the conservation easement. But as far as division of property, do you know if this property is located within the sphere of influence, boundaries of Kingsburg?
It's on the boundary line.
So it's outside of that, so it's not scheduled for development for a minimum of twenty-year period under their current plans?
I don't know what their long-term plans are, but I know they are on the boundary. The eighty-one acres is on the sphere of influence line for Kings County. I would also point out that the seven-point-five acres is unique in terms of how we deal with conservation easements. It is not in the Williamson Act. So I would say that ninety-five percent of the property or farmland that we would bring forward to you in the future for conservation would be in the Williamson Act, and there would be no tax impact. This is a very unique situation and has caused, you know, everybody a lot of work to come up with a reasonable fee. We both have to survive in this economic climate, and we recognize that, and would only appeal for a reasonable fee for us to go forward to do conservation in partnership with the county.
Going back to the uniqueness of this particular property, and that is that even if it were, if this conservation easement did not go into play in Fresno County and ultimately was developed, cities don't cross county lines ordinarily, and so the seven acres that's in Tulare County is still protected by the Rural Valley Lands Plan regardless of whether or not it's under the Williamson Act contracts.
Right.
I have a concern that, you know, we have our assessor here this morning, but the fact that there's a hundred-and-twenty dollar cost every year to administer this program, on this piece of property, that there apparently is not a willingness to pay by either the holder of the conservation easement or by somebody, is a problem for me because the rest of the taxpayers of Tulare County are going to pick up this hundred-and-twenty dollars. I mean, I have a problem with that because you're not paying much taxes anywhere on the seven acres to begin with, so that represents a pretty good size of the taxes. Then we have a loss of thirty dollars an acre in perpetuity on this property because of giving up the development rights.
You know, I'm not clear about how the thirty dollars per acre, as I read the staff report, it looks to me like it's five dollars an acre. So it would be helpful to clarify how that number was arrived at.
It might be the five, it might be, well, this is thirty dollars per acre, and it might have been five times a seven, which would have been thirty-five.
Right, which means five dollars per acre, which is thirty dollars a year, which is an entirely different financial issue. Not to mention, this will not be off of the tax roll, and it will return tax dollars to the county as it is now.
I have a couple of observations. I do want to disclose that I have talked to Mr. Spears about this property and the procedure, but number one, this stays on the tax roll. Number two, it's not in the Williamson Act. And if the assessor is here, I want to know, why would we be assessing this farm property on a potential development basis when it's still farm property? So I don't see the loss in the assessment of this piece of property just because it goes into a conservation easement. It should be based on the use of the property. So I don't see the degrading the value of the property other than something they're not being charged for in the first place. Now, if this land was valued at twenty thousand dollars an acre by the assessor versus a farmland evaluation, I would see there is that loss. But I don't see the loss, because it's still on the tax roll, it's still farm property, and there is no development value given to this, in my opinion. So, Mr. Hill, if you can answer that question for me.
I apologize, I wasn't prepared to respond this morning on this issue, but I'll be happy to try to address any issues Mr. Ashida has. I think the issue is that when a property that's not in the ag preserve goes under an agricultural or a conservation easement, we're then required to, it becomes like a de facto Land Conservation Act issue. We're then required to value it each year under a restricted approach, and that's where the value loss comes in, sir. I mean, we wouldn't be assessing this property as a development piece unless it were a development piece, but if it's an agricultural piece, this has been years since I've responded to this, I can't really remember, this thing has been ongoing for a long time. But that's where the assessment loss falls into the game.
While you're there, Mr. Hill, if I might, could you explain the hundred-and-twenty-dollar administrative cost that this incurs?
I apologize, I cannot. I haven't looked at this report in a long time.
But your staff would do some sort of analysis?
We were asked by RMA some time ago, I think Fred mentioned, or possibly Sophie mentioned, that it was nine years in the making, and I think it, so it was years ago that we were asked for a response, our office responded to it with some data, and honestly, I haven't looked at it for a long time.
The question I have is, still have, so the state of California is requiring you to assess this property differently than we'd assess other farmland, not in the Williamson Act?
Those that are not under, those that are not under the conservation easement. A property that's not under the Williamson Act, not under contract, if it goes under the conservation easement process, then we're required to value it each year under a restricted approach, which is essentially the approach that we use on the ag preserve properties.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. So the review of that would be the same review that you would give to a Williamson Act piece of property, is that, am I understanding that right?
We're required to do it on an income approach each year, that's right.
Okay, the same as?
Same as a restricted under the ag preserve.
How do you capitalize that income approach?
How do we capitalize it?
On what factor?
We estimate an imputed rent each year on an acreage basis, and then we then capitalize that into the, you know, an appraisal mathematics used by the cap rate that's provided each year by the state of California.
The state of California provides the cap rate?
Correct. Or the main portion of it, they don't provide the risk rate portion, but they provide the overall rate.
Anything else?
If I can, so I support a flat rate. I do see a dilemma here, the five acres versus a five thousand acre. I do think there ought to be a fee to do this. Full cost recovery for me in this case is difficult to deal with because, you know, I think this is going to be few and far between, so I mean, I would support a flat rate of five hundred dollars per parcel. If they came in and there was twelve parcels put together for one easement, I would, you know, say that there's going to be twelve parcels there, but I would support a five hundred dollar fee at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A matter has been brought to my attention, could I ask for a five-minute adjournment, please?
Sure.
In this item, thank you.
We adjourn for five minutes, and we'll return, we're not going into closed session, just adjourn for five minutes, and we'll be back in five minutes.
Okay, the Board is back in session. Counsel has brought to my attention that there was a procedural glitch in this matter today. There is a procedure whereby the county adopts fees, which was not followed in this case, so it's inappropriate to apply a fee in this situation to a particular transaction until that's been established. However, that would take a minimum of about sixty days to get done, and we know that the applicant is anxious to move forward, and we don't want to hinder that project any further. So what I would like to do is offer, with the consent of my staff, with my other board members, of just allowing them to pay a five hundred dollar sum by agreement to the county, a one-time amount, and then this transaction will be concluded, and then I would direct staff to go through the process of establishing a fee in the future for such types of transactions. Any comments or questions by members?
Is that acceptable? I mean, that's acceptable to me.
I, yes, I did speak with Mr. Spears, he said that is acceptable to them, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
For discussion, please cast your vote. Motion was made by Mr. Ennis and seconded by Mr. Ashida, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you all for being here this morning. Thank you, staff, for your work on this matter. All right, that will take us to item number, oh, you know, I need to get back, we have some timed items, I just went over the top, but we need to get back to those ninety, thirty timed items, so we'll take up item number five, requests from General Services Property Management to authorize land previously declared surplus to be offered for sale as is. I understand Mr. Newby's going to address this on this matter briefly this morning.
Yes, thank you, very briefly. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good morning. I am Robert Newby, a property specialist in the General Services Department of Tulare County. The matter before the Board is to set a time and place to accept bids for thirty-seven acres of property owned by the county on Avenue 170 near Road 28 in western Tulare County. In a previous board action, the Board declared the property surplus, directed staff to obtain an appraisal, and notify various agencies of the availability of this property. Those steps have been completed, and this action is to authorize receipt of the sealed bids for not less than one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. Be opened at the board meeting on November ninth at nine-thirty a.m. This is to further direct the General Services Manager to advertise the invitation to submit bids and direct today's resolution to be posted. That concludes my information.
All right. Any questions, comments, members?
Quick questions, no map, no picture, no idea where this is, other than south-west somewhere.
I'm not sure I heard you.
There's no, I don't know where this is at. There's no map, there's no picture, again.
It, I don't have a, that's available at this moment.
That's fine, if we do these in the future, can we stick a map in our book so we can see where it's at? And a procedural question, if I can, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cox.
Is this the way we have to sell every piece of property? We have literally hundreds of surplus pieces of property that I've been supportive of unloading for going on six years now. Do we have to do this procedure on every single piece of dirt that we own?
Government Code Section requires this process to be followed if the property is, I believe, twenty-five thousand dollars in value or greater.
Can we lump two-hundred together and do one action, and then give this to a commercial real estate agent to sell for us?
No, sir, you can't do that. You can have a single hearing with a number of pieces of property, but if the property has a value of more than, I believe it is twenty-five thousand dollars, you're required essentially to hold a public auction. There are a few exceptions, if you're selling property to another public agency, you don't have to go through this process, for example, but this is the process that the legislature has decided is the best to use.
Lucky S, what about the five-acre pieces of worthless stuff you know where that wouldn't meet the, maybe the three- or four-thousand-dollar level? Can those be sold as surplus without going through all this?
There has to be a declaration that they are surplus.
Yeah, and there's a process to follow to adopt the ordinance and then delegate that process to another public, county official.
Great. That was my procedural questions, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Thank you.
File, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, we approve it.
Motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask for some board direction? I'm gathering that perhaps Supervisor Cox would like us to adopt the ordinance process that Mr. Newby just referred to for pieces of property that are worth less than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Madam Counsel, I learned long ago, I don't give direction to staff without the rest of this board nodding their heads and smiling.
That's my reason for asking, sir.
Yes, and I think that we would all agree that the more efficient use of our time and energies, if that can be done, would be appropriate.
I did hand a file over to a former CEO who gave it to a staff member that included several hundred pieces of surplus property that the county has owned for, in some cases, decades, and they're not on the tax rolls. Even if they're not worth a lot of money, they're still not on the tax rolls, and they still have some value.
We end up with a lot of property that goes to tax sale, you're absolutely right, sir.
Yes, we do. Right, okay. Very good, and that will take us to item number six, and that's a public hearing, requests from the Resource Management Agency to continue the public hearing to December seventh, two thousand and ten, for Appeal Planning Commission Resolution Numbers eight-four-seven-five, eight-four-seven-six, and eight-four-seven-seven, for special use permit PSP zero-nine-zero-zero-five, for SA Recycling Solid Waste Recycling Operation and Zone Variance Number PZV zero-eight-zero-three-zero near Tulare. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Chairman Wethley, and members of the Board. After the June fifteenth public hearing, before your board applicant requested a third-party professional consultant to revise the environmental document. We solicited bids from four consultants that have agreements with the county, and received responses from two, from Michael Brandman Associates and from LSA Associates. We selected, county staff selected MBA based on their expertise and for both scope of work and the fees. Applicant provided, gave us a deposit, and executed a deposit agreement on August the twelfth. County purchasing executed an agreement with Michael Brandman Associates on August the eighteenth, and technical studies- the 18th, and technical studies have, have begun, the noise assessment was done yesterday. There's also a plan to do a health risk assessment, air quality and greenhouse gas analysis, agricultural conversion study. This should give you a more complete overview of the project's impact on the community of Tulare. We expect it will take about two months to complete, and then a little bit more circulation time, so we're asking for continuance to December the 7th. Any questions at this time?
Any questions of members?
My, my question is, you know, I've been contacted several times by various city officials, inquiring about the business and their operation currently, with respect to their current operating permit, or their current special use permit, and I just want to make sure that code compliance is in fact monitoring, and SA Recycling is also complying with the, the permit that is in place currently.
Mr. Chairman, this matter is on your board's agenda for closed session discussion, and I believe that perhaps we should discuss Supervisor Vanderpoel's question in closed session.
All right, we will then go to closed session and return in a moment, thank you.
These are items C and D on your board's closed session agenda.
Board is back out of closed session, on this item, and back in open session.
Mr. Chair, may I just clarify what I, my question regarding the operation under a current permit, there, the special use permit that I'm referring to is pending, and so it's not a current special use permit, but it is a pending permit, and it seems that the applicant is making efforts to come into compliance with that pending permit, but my question still applies into the pending permit, so, so in fact, what are they, what efforts are they undertaking, would you say publicly, to come into compliance with the permit that is pending?
To begin, they have erected a, excuse me, a six-foot block wall, and I'll backtrack a little bit, I forgot to introduce myself, I'm April Hill, planner from RMA, County of Tulare. Six-foot wall, which does not require a building permit, this is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, which requires a, a screen between industrial uses and residential uses. They have also paved approximately six acres of the site with concrete, very thick concrete for the size of the equipment, in order to have the, the vehicles on, on pavement, and the operations conducted on pavement, including crushing of appliances and scrap metal. There is only one dumpster for tires, which is another one of the conditions of approval. They have started an underground drain pipe for draining the, any stormwater. Their piles of stored materials are no higher than 10 feet, at the time of our site visit on this Thursday, and another site visit yesterday, the 20th. They do have more vehicles on the site than were, than we had conditions for, we had conditions for about 250, we're told that there are 450 vehicles on site. There are no signs of vectors, the level of dust seems normal, considering the season that we're in right now, and there were no noticeable odors on our site visit on Thursday the 16th. The applicant is in the, is in the audience, if you care to hear more of the improvements that I might have missed.
Again, this matter, and we're glad, we're going to have a public, this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing, but the, the recommendation is to continue this matter until December 7th, so the, the public hearing will continue until that time, people have that opportunity to speak at that time. Is there anything, any other questions or comments by board members? If not, I will open the, the public hearing, allow public testimony to be made at this Again, we will acknowledge your testimony today, and then this matter will be continued, I'm assuming on the motion of this board, it will continue until December 7th, at which time the public hearing will continue.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Larry Donaldson, I'm the Assistant City Attorney for the City of Tulare. We do not, of course, want the hearing today particularly, but we are asking this board to stay the operation pending the continuance until December the 7th, on this, on this operation. They are doing some trenching and other such things, they're also putting, doing grading, they're not getting permits for any of this, they're continuing to ask to be forgiven rather than doing things properly. They have not stored the hazardous waste in the method that was directed by this board, they have exceeded the number of vehicles there from 250, that was the maximum this board set with respect to their conditional operation at this point in time. They have no drain pans in, under these vehicles to prevent contamination of the soil, they basically are thumbing their nose at the board, and at the board's direction. What the City of Tulare would request is that there be a stay of their operation until such time as, as the hearing is, is heard on our appeal. Ms. Simons also has some additional information on this area.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Susan Simon, planner with the City of Tulare. Attached, you will find activities for SA Recycling since June 15th, 2010. The highlighted areas show the days SA Recycling was crushing. Those were more than half of the month for each of the last three months. The first picture shows the crusher, the vehicle crusher, which was last used August 31st, 2010. The second picture shows the addition of a logger crusher, which required a wide load permit from the City of Tulare, placed on the site August 13th, 2010. This logger crusher was not a part of the original noise study and the original application, and it is now permanently located on site. The third picture shows where the hazardous waste material is stored. The mitigation measure that was a part of the special use permit that was approved, required hazardous material to be stored in a building that is secured, locked up, with a notice stating that there is hazardous material in the building. In addition, the block wall was placed on site last Wednesday, it was over eight feet tall, the City of Tulare contacted the county, and the county went out, there were no permits issued for the eight-foot tall structure, and since then, yes, they have lowered it down to six feet. That is all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address this this morning?
Good morning, my name is Jeff Ferrano, I am the General Counsel for SA Recycling, the owner of this project, and appreciate the opportunity for you to give me a chance to address you on this. Since our last hearing, we have continued to operate, we believe in substantial performance with what the Planning Commission conditioned that they have issued. Some of the areas, for example, the pans under the drain under the cars, most of them have some, there are some that do not, but we, the policy that was, that has been established by us, is that before the cars go out into the, into the yard, they are fully inspected, and if there is any leaking, then that car is drained immediately, before it's put out. They are also inspected on a regular basis, and if there's any, any car that has any leaking, that is pulled back onto the concrete pad and drained before it goes back out. We do have a lot of pans out there, but we don't have enough, right now, there's more cars, there is 400 cars, because DMV is, we can't get rid of the cars until DMV clears them, and as you know, you know, the budget has, has made that process slow down a little bit. We have acquired a new computerized system, we connect directly with DMV, where we're getting able to speed that up process quite a bit, and we think that's going to be, be successful. The logger, we don't believe there is any restriction, that we have a logger on site, in fact, the logger is the benefit of what we do, the logger, in fact, the one that we brought in, is actually substantially more efficient than the old logger that we have, this one is considerably more quieter, carb efficient, AQMD air rights is much more efficient, so that has been brought in, and not as an addition to, but the replacement of the old one, which we got rid of. And it, it was the subject of the sound study yesterday, and I don't have the details, but I understand the, the, the sound study did indicate that the, the noise at the property line is below the county standards, and is well below the county standards, and it's, and we're doing well there. Hazardous waste, the requirement is that the waste be stored in a secure building, and they are in a secure building, the building is locked, it's a chain-linked fence across the front of the building, and it's locked, and these hazardous materials that we're talking about are the oils, that come out of the car and come out of the washing machine, they go into a secured 55-gallon drum, that is placed in, in this building before it's transported off, so I do not believe that there any hazardous material handling going on beyond, beyond that. The block wall, that is an effort on our behalf, on our part, to, to cooperate and be a friendly business in the area, because we did have residential, you know, move into our area behind us. This whole thing started because two years ago, we went into the city and asked for a variance to build an eight-foot block wall, and, and that's when they said, well, we don't want that, and so, here we are, trying to be good neighbors, and so we put up this six-foot block wall on the interior part of the property, does not require any zoning, basically, it was a mistake that they, these are stacked blocks, and so they put one block too high, and made it eight feet, which is actually a benefit, I think, because it provided complete blockage to the residential neighbors behind us, and, and we would like to put that back up, once we get, we just need engineering standards submitted to the building department, or, yeah, the building department, and we will seek to do that, so we thought that was a benefit, I think visually made it tremendously much better. But beyond that, I'm here to answer any questions, I think, you know, we, we do about 250 to 300 cars a month, that we pull off of abandoned vehicles in the area, we also bring in about 25 cars a month, or 200, you know, about 100 cars a month, on, on the polluting, the large polluting cars that we, on the buyback from the AQMD, we bring those in, so we are continuing to be a tremendous benefit to, to this area, and we are operating, I think, one of the cleanest areas that you're going to see around, so we are looking forward to finishing this process, we feel positive that everything is going to be fine, and, we're trying to be cooperative as we can, and we are, we are being, we're open to everybody, we had, we had many visitors come on our site, taking a look at what we're doing, and we're open to that, and we're open to anybody else who wants to take a look at us. Thank you.
I do have one question for you, Jeff, but before you head off the stage there. How, how often, per month, are you indeed crushing cars?
Please identify yourself.
I'm Steve Schuler, General Manager, SA Recycling, it's, as Jeff Ferrano was stating, we're at the mercy of the DMV, and I try to only crush once a month, we had an off-site crusher that would come in, it was a portable crusher, that would come in, if the DMV gives me a clear list of 150 cars, I need to get them cars off that property, so it's, it's kind of one of them tug and pull, I, I can't give you a definite answer, I'd like to, you know, every day, I'd like them to give me a list, I submit lists every single day, I'd like to be able to, but that's, you know, it's unattainable, because I'm at the mercy of the DMV.
So, our, our proposal is, is not necessarily, you know, limiting it to a number of days, is, you know, we are doing a crushing between certain hours of the day, in addition, the noise study shows that with the crusher running, it's well below the decibels required, and basically, the purpose of the crusher is allow us to move the cars off the property and, and process them, but to say we can only do one a month, or one a week, whatever, really doesn't have a lot of basis of, of fact, it's just, you know, some, it seems like a way to just slow us down, and it doesn't, nobody's given any indication that that crusher is a problem, and so, we're studying it completely, and, you know, it's, it's all in nature of when DMV gives us the clearance, we don't want to wait, okay, we, we got them cleared in the beginning of month, and we're not going to crush until the end of the month, then we're going to end up with a bunch of cars stacked up on a property, we want to crush as they go, we crush between, you know, 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night if we have to, if just a couple hours, we'll do that, but, you know, definitely not, you know, my understanding is the sound ordinances go from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night, but we're staying within more, more condensed hours, and, you know, the crusher was the quietest piece of equipment out there yesterday, quite frankly, and, so it's, I don't see, it's difficult, we're, in our application, we're not going to ask for restricted number of days, we're going to ask for hours, and noise ordinance, and, and simply that it operate in a, in a proper manner.
Okay, and then I have one last question for you, Jeff, has the county environmental health department been out to your site yet, because my concern, just in, in the current operation is, you know, obviously, the homes have grown around you, and there are residents around you, I just want to make sure that, and I know that they're doing the environmental studies and those things at this point in time, but has our environmental health department been out there to assure that there are no health and safety concerns for the residents around this operation?
Well, I'll let April answer that more precisely, but I know that last Thursday, April and, and the fire department from the county, and, and somebody else was out there Thursday, and then yesterday, we had five or six people, again, from the county and the city, out there walking the area, and I did not receive, Steve did not receive any complaints that anything we were doing was incorrect, I mean, we didn't get a full readout, but, you know, I'm always wait to hear, is there something we need to do or change, and nobody told us that, but I'll let April answer that, because I think she is a big part of that.
Thank you.
When I invited environmental health people to come out, I talked to the local enforcement agency staff, Keith Yonkey, and his, and another person, blank on name, Keith, this, this facility is not under their purview, it is not, it, it meets the three-part test, therefore, it is not a solid waste facility. And, he wouldn't know what, okay, that's, it's just, he did not want, he was not going to come out for that, for that purpose, because it doesn't meet it. Delta Vector was offered an opportunity to respond to the original use permit, did not respond, did not express concerns, there's no standing water. So, and dust concerns from the, from Samhuckine Air Quality Board will be addressed as part of the operations, and we included conditions of mitigation measures in, in the use permit approved by the Planning Commission.
And, and I might try to get a hold of environmental health, because I know that this is exempt, but I would just like to make sure that the current operations, as the permit is pending, do not endanger the residents around the area, so that, I would like to see that.
Forward to that health risk assessment that is on the guide, this is the guidelines of the Samhuckine Air, Air Quality Board.
Thank you. Any other public comments? And I'm going to not close the public comment, oh, I'm sorry, did you want, did you want to address this again, sir?
I would like to vote for yes.
All right.
Larry Donaldson, again, I would definitely disagree with the statement that they have many drip pans under those vehicles, they do not, they have a very few drip pans under those vehicles. If it is not a solid waste facility, then I presume it's a wrecking yard, which is the use that it's being put to, which is not permitted in that zone district at all. So I don't understand April's comments regarding the health department not coming out, or the health, environmental, not coming out because it wasn't a solid waste facility. We don't believe it is either, it's a wrecking yard, and that's what they're using it for. They have not complied with the minimum standards that this board set for them to operate temporarily, they have control over how many vehicles they bring in there, they were limited to 250, they now have 450 vehicles out there, and I suppose if they can't get DMV clearance, that number's going to continue to grow, from what I'm hearing in the presentation. Consequently, I don't, we don't believe that SA Consequently, I don't, we don't believe that S.A. Recycling is really giving us the serious effort even to comply with the limited, um, requirements that this board placed on them initially to, to operate in the interim basis until appeal is heard. Thank you very much for your time.
Two quick, um, points. One is, um, we do not qualify the solid waste facility, which has a whole nother separate set of regulations. We are not a dismantling or a wrecking yard. The definition of dismantling and wrecking yard is a, is a facility that takes vehicles in, sells parts off, and has customers coming in buying parts. We don't do that. We, we bring a car in, we, we take the oil out, we compact it, we ship it off, and that's all we do. A dismantling, um, in wrecking yard does have a separate section in the, in the, um, in the zoning ordinance, which we don't fit within that, so we're falling under the recycling facility. Um, and then as far as the, uh, the cars on the lot, there are 450. No car has been there longer than 90 days. Um, and, and basically, we're processing as we can move through. So we put dates on our car as they come in. They're all marked. You can go out there, and they're all lined up in a neat and orderly fashion. They're not stacked up, they're not piled up, they're not creating any type of, um, vector problems, water problems, or anything of that, of that nature. Uh, basically, we're just processing as quick as the DMV will allow us to do, and, um, we do not allow them, if, if they're going to be there longer than 90 days, we'll haul them off to another, to our Bakersfield facility. We just, our, our concept is not to let cars stay in, at a storage facility. Thank you.
All right. I'm closing the public comment period only for this meeting today. The hearing, it will continue to, uh, I'm assuming we'll continue this matter to the requested date, at which time the public hearing will continue. Are there any other comments or statements?
I, I will make the motion to continue this item to the December, um, 7th, uh, date, but I would like to also add the caveat that, uh, upon environmental health inspection, if they do find hazard, that we do cease the operation at that point in time. I, I just have concern for the residents around, and even though the health study has not been completed, I just want to be rest assured that, uh, it is going to be taken care of, and they, those people are safe, so.
Can I second that with a very brief comment?
Sure.
Last time we had this hearing, we set some clear standards. How many days you could crush, how many cars you could have on the site, you're not complying. So I'll be listening for, uh, that follow-up report when we meet December 7th.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous to continue this matter to December 7th. All right, back to our untimed items. We're on item number, um, 14. Requesting the Resource Management Agency to approve GPI 10 dash 003 to allow Mr. Martin T. and Ellen K. Burnham to proceed with a general plan amendment.
Morning supervisors. Henry Dong with the Resource Management Agency. The project I bring for you today is GPI 10 dash 003. The applicant is Martin and Ellen Burnham. The agent is Donnie Stiver, and the engineer for Mr. Stivers is Martin Spungberg. The request is for, uh, your board to approve the general plan initiation to allow the applicant to proceed with the general plan amendment and the change of zone. The project description is to change the land use designation from Quea River floodway designation to low-density residential, and to rezone the project site from F1 primary floodplain zone to RA 43, rural residential 43,000 square feet. Project is located east of the intersection of North Fork Drive and Quea River Drive in Three Rivers. And, uh, the surrounding properties include, uh, Quea River Drive, uh, rural residences, and the old airport to the north, um, north, the North Fork of the Quea River and rural residences to the west over here, and, um, to the south is the Middle Fork, Quea River rural residences and some commercial, um, operations. To the east is the Middle Fork, Quea River and rural residences. The existing land use designation is, for the project site, you, you can see in this map, is the Quea River floodway designation. This is also the, um, the state floodway designation, um, which we will show later that we will be changing to, uh, the federal designation. Step after the general plan amendment is approved would be for the, the applicants to work with the state to, uh, change the state floodway designations as well. This map, uh, shows the existing zoning for the project site. It's, uh, zoning is F1 primary floodplain zone. Um, F1 restricts development in the floodway designation areas. Uh, to the north is also, uh, F1 and AE 20 exclusive agriculture and RO 44, single-family estate. Uh, to the west, we see, um, RA 43 rural residential. Uh, to the east is F1 and RA 43, and to the south is F1, RA 43, and E2SC, F2, which is a commercial secondary floodplain zoning. Map here shows the, uh, Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood insurance rate map. Um, as you can see here, the FEMA studies show that the southern portion of the property is within the AE zone, which is, um, the 100-year floodplain area with a 1% chance of annual flood. And the northern portion of the project site is within the flood X zone or the 500-year flood area, uh, with a 0.2% annual chance of flood. Uh, Mr. Stivers and Mr. Spungberg have conducted studies that Mr. Spungberg will go over later, um, that shows that support with the FEMA, um, floodway, uh, flood designations and that they're outside of the, the floodway area. This map here shows the, um, the project area shaded, um, to the north, um, area that will be changed to, um, low-density residential and RA 43. Um, the FEMA floodway 100-year line, uh, that winds through the project area, that will, that will be the new, the new floodway designation. Uh, we received comments from FEMA. The comments include that, uh, all buildings constructed within a riverine floodplain must be elevated so that the lowest floor is at or above the flood elevation level in accordance with the effective flood insurance rate map. Uh, in the areas of construction, is, if the areas of construction are located within the regulatory floodway as delineated by, on the, uh, flood insurance rate map, any development must not increase flood, base flood elevation levels. A hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis must be performed prior to the start of development and must demonstrate that development would not cause any rise in base flood levels. No rises permitted within the regulatory floodways. Further comments state that upon completion of any development that changes existing special flood hazard areas, um, the National Flood Insurance Program directs all participating committees to submit appropriate data to the, to FEMA for, uh, a rate map revision. The, uh, the proposed project actually is conforming with the FEMA regulations, so they meet that, and, uh, development will occur outside of the FEMA's 100-year floodplain Um, the Three Rivers Community Plan and the Environmental Resource Management, Management Element are the principal documents that are applicable to the project. The Three Rivers Community Plan states in their community development goal that, uh, the county is to regulate residential densities based on soil suitability to provide for proper disposal of septic tank effluences. The project site contains Tijunga sand, soil, and zero-fluent soils. Uh, zero-fluent soils are considered poorly suited for development, mainly due to flood hazards and boulders on the surface. And Tijunga, Tijunga sand soil is well-suited for urban developments and has few, uh, few development limitations.
Excuse me, could you pull that mic up just a little bit higher, please?
The Three Rivers, uh, environmental quality goal prohibits structural development within the designated floodway. Uh, an implementation measure from Three Rivers Community Plan states that properties within the designated floodway, um, does, designates, uh, the Quea River floodway approximately at the 100-year floodline. Properties within the designated floodway may be developed for those uses listed in the F1 primary floodplain zone and the F2 secondary floodplain combining, combining zone of the Tulare County zoning ordinance. Is the intent of this plan that within a reasonable period of time following the adoption to zone all vacant land within the Quea River designated floodway to F1 zone? In addition, is intent to zone all land within the designated floodway, which contains existing structures, uh, including a reasonable area around said structures to an appropriate base zone, which will make the existing structures conforming to combine with the base zone with the F2 zone. So, uh, the Three Rivers, uh, Community Plan and the Quea floodway designation intended to include properties within the 100-year floodplain in the, in the, uh, floodway designation. But, uh, you see here, a generalized technique was utilized to include vacant lands within the F1 zone, and so the GPI, uh, designation will, uh, redesignate the project area to the, the more accurate FEMA designations. Here, um, we have the Environmental Resource Management Element states in issue 9E that the urban growth should not occur in floodplains near shorelines or scenic historic sites, valuable resource lands, aquifer recharge areas, and other protection areas designated on the open space plan, unless such uses can be designated to be compatible and unintrusive. Issue 5A states that the county should avail itself to all technical assistance possible from state and federal agencies in order to completely establish areas where public safety can be jeopardized through improper construction and land use. The GPI will align the county regulations with the FEMA 100-year floodplain studies, and the project will not be intrusive to the FEMA 100-year floodplain area. Issue three of the, of the ERME states that the riparian lands should be protected through floodplain programs for wildlife habitat designated as recreation open, open space and recognized for their importance in reducing air and water pollution. Issue 3A states vegetative buffer strips along stream courses should be protected when possible to provide shade, wildlife cover, or maintain stability of stream banks, except where it may aggravate flood damage of where increased water yields outweigh benefits to wildlife and prevention of erosion. So a, um, a biological survey was conducted, um, through Mr. Stivers by biologist Hal D. Bolli, who analyzed the potential impacts to the special status species and riparian habitat in the area. Comments from, uh, Mr. Bolli included that the northern portion of property is herbaceous cover with sparse tree cover, and the existing available home site has no tree population. States that, uh, there are adequate areas on the property to allow for construction of septic systems that will not impact the oak, sycamores, or riparian area. Um, his recommended, uh, mitigation measures from Mr. Bolli were to provide a condition that would, uh, reduce any impact, adverse impacts to biological resources associated with the main and North Fork riparian corridors bounding in this parcel. So further analysis during the GPA process, um, could examine whether additional riparian buffers will be necessary for the project area. And also, the, the GPA can analyze whether archaeological or cultural, uh, factors exist on the property. Now go over, uh, some of the general plan 2030 update policies that could affect the property here. The health and safety element, um, 5.1 states that the county shall ensure that all development within the designated floodway or floodplain zones conforms with FEMA regulations at Tulare County flood damage prevention ordinance. 5.3 states that the county shall continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, 5.6 states county shall require tentative and final subdivision maps and approved site plans to delineate areas subject to flooding during a, a 100-year flood event. And 5.9 states the county shall ensure that riparian areas and drainage areas within the 100-year floodplains are free from development that may adversely impact floodway capacity and characteristics of natural riparian areas or natural groundwater recharge areas. And, uh, last pause here is 5.2, the county shall regulate development in the 100-year floodplain zones, except sheet flow zones as designated on the maps prepared by FEMA in accordance with the following: critical facilities, passive recreational activities, and new developments and divisions of lands, especially residential subdivisions. So we see here that the, um, general plan 2030 policies support utilizing the FEMA designations in their policies, and, uh, the GPI will conform to this by updating the project area to the FEMA requirements. Um, we received, uh, comment letters from, uh, various agencies, and none of them opposed to this general plan initiation. And so, based on the findings, we, staff recommends that, uh, your board approve GPI to allow the applicant to pursue the general plan amendment. Also, uh, Mr. Spungberg has, uh, some data that he would like to go over following this presentation, so.
Morning. You can use that mic if you want, right there.
I have the one picture I wanted to have.
Oh, sure.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Dr. Marty Spungberg, uh, registered civil engineer. I'm the engineer of record for the Burnhams, and I just wanted to take a couple minutes and, um, go over why I think the, the county's request is, is, uh, very reasonable. Uh, basically, I'm just going to go over how the state map was constructed, and as the report in front of you says, the, the current zoning is based on the state map. And I'll just show you technically why there's no question in my mind that, that that should be abandoned, and the zoning should be based on the, on the FEMA mapping. Um, I know this is a very busy slide, so I apologize for this. The state map, the state designated floodway map is this dashed green line, and there's actually no points at all within the Burnhams' property. This was based on third-party observations of the 1966 flood of record, not based on any science, no hydraulics, not even topography. It was based on third-party observations taken a couple years after this flood of record, and there's some point, and again, it's just somebody who said, yeah, I saw it come up this far, some point just off the map, and then another point here, and they literally just connected the dots. They didn't even, um, follow topography. It also should be mentioned that the 1966 flood of record has been determined by FEMA not to be the 100-year flood, but the 140-year flood. not to be the 100-year flood, but the 140-year flood. So, FEMA came in, and their map is this line in red. This is the same one that Mr. Dong showed you a few minutes ago, and they did a HECRA study, so a detailed hydrologic, hydraulic modeling, several cross-sections through the property, and they showed that this whole area, which is quite high compared to the areas that did flood, was several feet above the 100-year storm. So, you're just a much more technical approach. The state's approach literally was, you know, it can't be considered to be technical. They literally had almost no data. They used what they had, but it, you know, really not based on anything, not even topography. So, FEMA was a much more detailed mapping. It was based on the 100-year storm, or the 100-year flood, I should say. And then, what myself and Mr. Stivers have done is come in and infilled what FEMA did, many more cross-sections, much more topographic data, and basically, we got the same result. We verified what FEMA did. Also, the state map was generated, I think it was '76, and the FEMA study was re-verified and revalidated just last year. So, again, I think on a technical basis, there's no doubt that the zoning should be based on the federal map, not the state map. And that was all I was planning to say. I'd be happy to answer any technical questions that you might have. Any questions by members? No questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Picture is definitely worth a thousand points. All right. Is there anybody else who wants you to address the board on this matter? If not, I entertain a motion.
Of approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sheed, a seconded by Mr. Hennis. Please cast your votes, and the vote's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Dong. And I believe that concludes our meeting until 1:30, when we will reconvene to handle our budget hearings afternoon. We have closed session items to handle in the interim.
We do have a few, Mr. Chairman. Items A, B, I, and J are off agenda. Your board has already adjourned and met regarding items C and D. Accordingly, you now adjourn for items E through H and J through N as set forth on your board's agenda and addendum. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Very good. Board will be adjourned in closed session.
I can't see him. He's out here.
Hey, Gene, is this yours? Gene, is this yours? Do you need, like, how bad?
I don't, actually.
I'm just kidding. All right.
All set. State of California, take note. This is how it's done. Welcome back this afternoon. We are going to convene at this time as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and Governing Board for the Redevelopment Agency, In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority, Terabella Sewer District, and Flood Control District. At this time, I'm opening the COPs and the county budget public hearings, and I call now for any public comments on the hearing agenda. Are any public comments on the hearing agenda scheduled for today? Seeing no one, I will now call on Mr. Rousseau to lead the board through the budget. Mr. Rousseau?
Thank you, Chairman Worthley. I would like to introduce, to start with, Sheriff Captain Williams to present state and federal COPs programs.
Morning, Captain. Or afternoon, ready?
Good afternoon, board members. It's my privilege to talk a little bit about the COPs frontline funding, also known as Citizens Option for Public Safety, grant funding through the state, and as Chairman Worthley has noted, the state is a little bit unsure of what's happening right now, and this money does come through the state. Therefore, we have a little bit of uncertainty there anyway, but we have done some forecasts and a little bit of background on COPs. Each year, the legislature gives counties and cities a variety of funds to supplement local law enforcement budgets, and the state's given Tulare County more than $20 million in COPs funding in the last 14 years since this program was created. And as noted, we had our public hearing, that's required statutorily, that we have that, to take input on usage of COPs funding. Since we don't have a budget passed by the state yet, we are projecting that we will receive $558,554 in COPs funding for the 1011 fiscal year. The Sheriff's Department plans to spend its share of the COPs money, which would be projected at $379,319, the same way we did last year, to supplement funding for jail, supervision, and for patrol deputies. This year's projected allocation of COPs will partially pay for one correctional sergeant and three patrol deputies. The balance of the COPs funding, projected $179,235, also comes to the Sheriff's Department, but it's earmarked for the District Attorney's Office. The DA's office also plans to use its COPs allocation in the same manner as last year. The DA will use the money to support two positions assigned to the white-collar crimes, a deputy district attorney and an investigator. The state also allocates COPs funding to the county's eight cities. Last year, each city within Tulare County received $100,000. And that is our spending plan for the 1011 year, if hopefully that money does come from the state. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Very well, we will close the COPs public hearing and bring it back to the board, and it calls for a motion to accept the state COPs citizens' option on public safety supplemental law enforcement funding and authorize the auditor controller to distribute the monies when received per the spending plan as modified by public input and board of super direction.
Removed.
I'll second. I think we opened.
Yeah, we had the public.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, the motion was by Mr. Hennis, a seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous and approval. At this time, there will be a presentation by our CEO.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'll go through a PowerPoint as a global overview of the budget process, and then I'll go through the listing of each individual budget that's going to need to be approved. See if I can get it straight. Start with the national and state economic environment that we find ourselves in. It's probably not news to all of you, but we're experiencing high unemployment. And when I prepared for this, I wanted to give the current unemployment numbers for both the state, county, and the nation. And at this point in time, the county Tulare's unemployment rate is 15.9% for August of 2010. The state, a little bit below its record level of 12.7, is at 12.4% unemployment, and the nation as a whole is at 9.5%. I attended a conference recently, and a gentleman said that a recession is when your neighbor has lost his job. A depression is when you've lost your job. So, we find ourselves in a very interesting environment. And what I thought might be helpful is to look back at the last five years unemployment rates relative to where we're at today. In 2005, in the state, there were only three counties that had unemployment rates over 10%. In 2006, there were only two counties that had unemployment rates over 10%. 2007, there were three counties with unemployment rates over 10%. And then, things started to go south. In 2008, there were 17 counties with unemployment rate over 10%. 2009, 47 counties with unemployment rates over 10%. And where are we at here? In 2010, there are 50 counties with unemployment rates over 10%, and 19 counties with unemployment rates over 15%. So, we find ourselves in a very different economic environment just in a matter of five years. Bless you. You know, we're finding ourselves with limited or lower consumer spending, and business spending for that matter. We're continuing to see, and we will probably continue to see in the near future, state and local government staffing program reductions. And then, as you started the hearing today, we're still waiting for the state to pass its budget. The budget that we're prepared today does not reflect any state changes because we're not sure what they're going to do at this point. The global protocols that we use to prepare the budget, this is kind of, I beat this to death every year, but I think it's really important that we remember what has put ourselves in the position that we find ourselves in today. You know, when grant-funded programs go away or are limited, they must be reduced and/or eliminated. We should always budget historically normal revenue amounts instead of inflated revenue amounts that are based on economic conditions, and I'll show you a slide that will kind of drive that home. We need to continue to improve the structural budget. Our fund balance got a little bit high during the good times. The budget that we prepared today has a structural fund balance of $7 million, and we're going to look to lower that even further in future fiscal years. The use of one-time revenues for one-time purposes, and I added this and bolded it last night at my kitchen table, or increase contingency for future challenges, and that's what we did with the excess fund balance in this year's budget. And then Supervisor Cox's favorite bullet point, sale of asset proceeds designated for future capital needs. It's a good thing. Here's a good example of budgeting a normal amount and not increasing the budgeted amounts during positive economic times. These two examples are property transfer fees, the budgeted in the accessories department, and supplemental secure taxes, which are a part of discretionary revenues. We have budgeted those same amounts over the last five years despite the huge increases. And now, you can see just how important it is to hold fast to this protocol because the revenues have swung back and now are, hopefully, will meet the target for this year. The $800,000 in supplemental, we were kind of worried last year whether we'd hit that number. We came in at 1.1. We'll see what happens this year. Property transfer fees are the same thing. You've got to be very careful with these revenue amounts, and the safest bet is to use an average amount during normal times and let the excess fall to fund balance, which is what we've allowed happen over the last couple of years. Here's a global overview of the budget that we are talking about today. As you can see, it has approximately a $30 million increase globally. Let me go through some of the reasons why. It's almost a $29.6 million increase, or 3.2% over last year's adopted budget. We had to add an insurance fund this year, an internal service fund for our self-insured health insurance, and that's just really an accounting entry. It's not additional dollars being spent. So, when you pull that out of the equation, the 13.6, the overall increase is about 1.5% or 13.6 million. The general fund decreased by 6.2 million, or approximately 1%, and is really due to the 4% to 8% reductions that we ask our departments to live with. Outside the general fund, the increases were due to, like I just said, the self-insured health insurance fund, which is our newest ISF, and additional road fund revenues. So, when you add the road fund revenues with the self-insured increase of approximately 16 million factor, that with reductions in general fund and what have you, that brings, it nets to approximately $30 million increase. The county general fund, again, this is just for Gene because I'm a bean counter at heart. I just want to differentiate and make sure that everyone understands what the general fund is. It's the county's main operating fund. It accounts for all the activity that's not required by statute or by GASB to be accounted for in separate funds. So, over the last five years, you can see the trend. We peaked out in appropriations in fiscal year 2007/8, and we've been decreasing ever The general fund overview, the general fund has a $9.1 million shortfall. Part of it is due to the countywide revenues are projected to decrease by 4.4 million, or approximately 3.3%. In order to reduce the shortfall and essentially reduce the impact to our county departments, we are using 10% of our $20 million reserve, or $2 million, and an additional $1 million in workers' compensation excess reserves to bring the overall shortfall down to 6.1, 6.2. And that's what we based our reductions on to departments. And during the year, we created our general services department, excuse me, which was a big effort, and at this time, I want to thank publicly Kristin Bennett, Brian Summers, and Ted Phipps for really doing a good job, a yeoman's job, in going into that area, cleaning it up, developing efficiencies while you were still doing some capital-related work. So, I really appreciate your efforts. And that reminds me, I forgot to do the initial thank yous to my staff. They worked long and hard on this budget book. I probably put a little time, as I have the last three years, in working on this. But I want to thank specifically Martin Meyer, Paul Guerrero, Carol Pytling, Deborah Vaughn, Carrie Boggs, Kathy Bradford, Kristin Bennett, and the Printing Division for doing a great job and working with us as they usually do on a last-minute basis. So, where are we at here? The general fund overview continued, is the same as last year. We gave our department heads, who have a lot more experience, a lot of experience in ups and downs of the economy, we gave them discretion over their, how to meet the targets and other operational efficiencies. We did put a new policy in place. We're going to allow departments to save 50% of their budgetary savings to use for future budget challenges. We have come to agreement with all of our bargaining units for the package noted up there, and at this time also, I want to thank the department heads for doing a great job, being tremendous team players, and working with my office during a very difficult time to make the best of the situation that we find ourselves in, and the bargaining units for coming to the table and recognizing it's time for all of us to share in the pain. I appreciate all the bargaining units coming forth and coming to agreement. So does Mr. Huntley. Here's a schedule that you've seen before. You know, I looked over the last three years worth of presentations that I've done, and I realized that I basically say the same thing every year, and it can be kind of boring. So, what I did was I added two fiscal years to the schedule to add some clarity to where we were, you know, three years ago and where we are today relative to how we use discretionary revenues. I added on the bottom, which wasn't on prior slides, the total net county cost, which is comprised of general county revenues or discretionary revenues and fund balance. And as you can see, we were very conservative, starting with 2007/8, we're very conservative with our revenue estimates. So, our fund balance was sky-high. So, our fund balance was as high as 24.5 in '07-'08 and has trended down ever since to where this year, the fund balance is 11.3, which is closer to normal. The countywide revenues is another indication of why we find ourselves in the situation we're in. To start with, in 2010-11, the $131,107,000 amount includes $2 million in reserves. That amount actually should be $129 million. So, you can see our discretionary revenues have dropped to levels probably 2006-7, 2005-6 levels, and that's really prompted us to make the reductions that we've made in the last couple of years. As far as percentage of the discretionary pie is concerned, one thing to consider when you look at these numbers and percentages is that because we have a lot of one-time monies in fund balance, the percentage allocations are a little bit skewed. We would typically put some of the one-time monies in administration and fiscal, and also contingency budget is in that area. But criminal justice remains a very important component of the budget. It was 65% in fiscal 2007/8, and It was sixty-five percent in fiscal two thousand seven, eight and has been at seventies percent of the discretionary pie in the last two fiscal years. So despite the cuts that we've, we've, we've made, we have kept criminal justice percentage of the, of the pie essentially the same. Health and Human Services has remained stable at approximately nineteen percent of, of the budget. And those, and, and those, that amount really is maintenance of efforts for various programs that they participate in, along with some countywide programs that we ask them to do, some of which are against their will. Land use and development has been, you can see the trend with the reduction in, in economic activity. Their, their budgeted amount has decreased somewhat from its high of six point seven approximately in oh seven, oh eight to four point eight in two thousand ten, eleven. But because the entire pie has shrunk, their percentage is approximately the same at four percent. Interesting slide. Other budgets that we, that we look at, we don't spend too much time on. The fire department's budget is, it's going to decrease for the third straight year. They're still going to be able to, that's really prompted by, they, they start off with a large fund balance their first year of operation and that fund's balance has decreased somewhat. It was close to two, a little over two to begin with. It is now closer to one, one million. The fire department will be bringing a, an overview of where they're at after, since they've started in the next couple of months for more detail. The road fund budget is increased, increasing by again twenty-six million. Like I indicated earlier, we've received a lot more federal and, and state dollars and including Measure R and, and that's really tremendous success story for the county as a whole. I love the, the sheet of paper that says five hundred million dollars in projects in five years. That's great. Solid waste budget decreases by three point six million because they, they did budget for some fixed asset purchases that they actually never made in prior years. We are having a consultant do an overview of our solid waste system and that study will be coming back to the board in the next couple of months. And because we, we went to self-insured status for health insurance, we had to create an ISF. It's not additional spending. Instead of the monies going out of the general fund directly to the HMO or PPO, it's going to go into an ISF, then go out to the HMO and PPO. But that was required by GASB once we went to self-insured status. What I wanted to end today on is something that we don't take the time to do, generally speaking and certainly as an organization, and that is to stop and, and look at some of the accomplishments that, that we've made. And what I've done is I'm going to note some pages that I, I got these from, but we have a lot to be proud of despite a very difficult economic environment that has forced us to reduce staff or, or hold, hold positions vacant and what have you. Departments have nevertheless used this time to, to, to scrutinize their budget, scrutinize the way that they do business and look for opportunities and efficiencies. I started with the continued success of Step Up and the related Loop Bus programs. We're getting a heck of a bang for our buck for a relatively inexpensive program. We started a, we established social network sites last year with the help of Jed and he did a good job with that in a fairly short period of time. Council's implemented phase one of contract streamlining project and hopefully phase two and three. I'm not sure how many phases, but I know that the number of contracts, at least the process has, 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 has decreased in time and, and that's a good thing. They also implemented with the help of Supervisor Vanderpoel, Government One-on-One for newly electeds, which is very helpful. We'll be rolling that back out in December. The, all of the public safety departments had new programs installed in the last few years. And one of the, one of the, one of the positive aspects coming out of that is the DA has started electronic filing and selected cases between police agencies, district, his office and the courts. And they plan on expanding that as much as possible. That's been very helpful. HR with the help of Mr. Huntley helped set up the JPA, as I noted earlier, with this county of Fresno. And that generated a no increase in the premiums for calendar year two thousand ten. So that's been a success and I look forward to future successes with that relationship. We completed the history of farm labor and ag museum, which is a beautiful building in Moonee's Grove. Like I said earlier, with the help of, of Ms. Bennett and Mr. Summers and Mr. Phipps, we established a general services agency and we've, we've already come up with a lot of efficiencies. We're going to be doing, they've done a tremendous job with that group. They've, they've empowered them, the employees in that area to, and supported them in their efforts and, and, and things have really turned around on, from a service level standpoint and a morale standpoint. So we have a lot to be proud in that area. We completed the five acre multipurpose recharge basin in Moonee's Grove, which is something this county is, is behind the curve on relative to our neighbors. And I think a part of that is due to the, you know, the, the work of the water commission and this board's focus on water related issues. We completed phases, Road eighty, Road one oh eight and Betty Drive. The Betty Brook Drive project in particular was, was not managed well for a period of time and Britt Fussell and, and Clint Sims and that team of folks did a tremendous job, Lori Mercer included, to save that project and, and, and push it forward. So I, I wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts. We completed the probation IT accounting program as a second phase of their, of their IT, their IT program, a program that's really revolutionized the way they do business, which is a cool thing. We completed the voiceover internet protocol installations in sixteen areas. We found and disconnected five hundred and seventy-four unused lines. You know, this, the phone issue was a big issue when I first came to this county in two thousand four. We had multiple phone systems. We were being, we were being attacked by vendors who wanted to help us and, and what have you. And we brought in a, a solid IT department and, and now we have one system or will have, soon have one system throughout the county, which is really cool. We implemented a new mainframe and new backup system for the entire county, providing faster backup, which is not easy to do. There's a future FCC regulations for radios and repeaters. We are well ahead of the curve. As part of that process, we replaced six hundred and twenty-five mobile phones and seventy-five repeaters. We look to finish that project and become full compliance this fiscal year. So, and, and the monies that we've spent are, are going to be used as match for future grant opportunities by not only us, but our local agencies. The, and we completed the general plan. Goals, again, and I, you know, I, I put the page numbers on here and I didn't even look at them. If you can, you can find all the accomplishments and the goals in our budget book. Again, we are trying to focus on, on goals and, and accomplishments, put dates to the, the goals. And it's the old adage, what doesn't get measured, doesn't get done. And we're trying to measure more things more than ever. For goals for next year, and again, I didn't, I didn't cite all of the accomplishments that we, that we accomplished. I just went through the book quickly, the same here with goals. There are many more goals than what I'm going to review today because I only have two more slides. But the ones that, that stuck out to me were, we're going to be managing a two million dollar disadvantaged community water study, which is going to be very interesting how that works out as a two-year project. The assessors office is designing an in-house roll change module to improve efficiencies, which is long overdue. The auditor is looking to install a cash hearing system in the treasurer's division. The, the purchasing agents, as a part of the AFIN upgrade, is going to try to develop and improve the purchasing module in AFIN and go to a, a paperless system, which will help all departments that, that work with, with purchasing. There's something that risk is rolling out with, in conjunction with HR and, and county council, but it'll be available to all of our departments and that is to provide an online training through Performance Platform Project. As, as departments do internal training, they can record that training, put it on the module and use it for future training purposes. Folks will be able to train both in, in departments and in some cases, as in the sheriff's department, they're going to be training out in the field, which will be very interesting, on a daily basis. It's a good thing. We're going to expand the parking lot surrounding Superior Court and we're going to add approximately hundred, hundred and sixty something spots. That will make a lot of folks in this area very happy. Something that came to your board within the last couple of months, we're going to be upgrading the parks infrastructure. And last slide, I promise, we're going to finish another project that has taken way too long and we're finished the motor pool project. We're going to up, upgrade the existing permit software with functional GIS-based system in our resource management agency as, as part of Jake's simplify streamline and hey, get stuff done attitude. We're going to develop with Jed's help and implement a countywide employer-based trip reduction program. The reality is some of the things we've done as, as an employer have already, has our, have already created credits that we will use in the program such as office closures, something that's coming up, the paperless check stub program where currently we have all of our departments going to the, whoa, going to the auditor's office, sorry about that, going to the auditor's office every two weeks to pick up stubs, four thousand stubs approximately that are stuffed in envelopes. And then the departments have to, have to deliver them to the employees wherever they might be working out in the county on a bi-weekly basis. Those check stubs are going to go away. We're going to go to paperless check stubs that employees will be able to print online, including the W two. And that's going to save four thousand check stubs plus four thousand envelopes times twenty-six. It's going to save a lot of paper and a lot of time, a lot of staff time. Lot, lot of trip reductions, believe me. Going back up where, where we, we're going to participate in the countywide deployment of broadband infrastructure, which is a heck of a project for this county to, to lay broadband in underserved, unincorporated and in some unincorporated areas. It's going to be tremendous help for the Central Valley. We're going to upgrade various county libraries with new roofs, painting, rugs, whatever the case might be, so we can try to improve our literacy rate and, and provide services to the unemployed that are looking for help in finding jobs. And since I've already mentioned the check stub program, we are going to, as a part of the motor pool project, we're going to implement a new fleet services tracking system that will help us get, get a better handle on our usage of cars, the maintenance of them and what have you. And that's my presentation for, for today.
Thank you, Gene.
The process that we would like to follow is to present each group of funds for your review, discussion, modification, and approval. Following the by-fund approvals, we will request your direction and authorization for adjustments and then conclude with the adoption of the full budget. The materials we will be working from today are the recommended budget book, the agenda item and the agenda which provides the order of items. The first order of business is to discuss the county's enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are used to account for an activity for which a fee is charged to external users for goods or services. As compared to ISFs, ISFs provide services to internal users. Enterprise funds provide services to external users. The two most important enterprise funds in terms of size and activity are the solid waste and transit funds. The L and M funds are listed, listed accordingly. And I'm not going to read them all. I have no specific comments about these funds, but I would be happy to respond to any, any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Okay, if there are no questions, approval of the enterprise fund budget is requested at this time.
All right. Have we entertained a motion to approve the enterprise funds as recommended?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Shida, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Okay, the county service area budgets provide for activities that are specific to areas and projects. Users pays fees for these activities. The funds are, and I, I will read these. El Ranch of Sewer, Lemon Cove Water, Tulleville Sewer, Yedum Water, Delph Colony Sewer, Seville Sewer, Traver Sewer, Wells Tract Water, Delph Colony Water, Tonyville Sewer, Yedum Sewer, and last but not least, the Wells Tract Sewer. If there are no questions, approval of these budgets is requested.
Any questions? Done, entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Ennis. Seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous of approval.
Okay. The next group of budgets includes redevelopment agencies, special districts, and in-home support services, public authority. Your board reviews plans and project statements for these throughout the year. Today's action establishes the annual budgets for each entities. The funds are, as noted, administration, Goshen, and I'm, I'm, I'll start with the redevelopment projects. The administration, Goshen, Poplar Cotton Center, Cutler, Rosy, Ivanhoe, Ridge Grove, Early Mart, Pixley, and Traver. You know, as part of our change to the resource management agency last year, in working with Jake, I'm the executive director of, of the RDA. And it's been a pleasure to work with the RDA employees up to this point. We've got a lot to do in that area. In addition to the redevelopment areas, I'm going to ask you to approve the Tarabella Sewer District and the Tullary County Flood Control District. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a separate vote for the in-home supportive services public authority because Supervisor Cox is going to have to recuse himself. But at this time, if there are no questions, approval of the budgets that I just read is requested.
I'll make the motion that we approve the budget's requested, less the in-home supportive services agency.
We have a motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Mr. Cox will step, step outside briefly as we take up the motion for in-home supportive services public authority.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Shida, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are four to zero. Cox abstaining from the discussions and the voting. And that will then bring us to the internal service funds.
As I noted earlier, enterprise funds are used for services provided to external users. ISF funds or internal service funds are used to account for goods or services provided by one department or agency to other departments or agencies. These funds operate on a cost reimbursement basis. The funds are the following, and, and there's been a change in, in oversight of a number of these internal service funds. With the change in RMA, we brought general service into, under the umbrella of the CO's office with Kristin Bennett's oversight. So under county administrative office, we find the copier services, custodial services, facilities, fleet services, ground services, mail services, print services, and utilities. Under county council, we have, she oversees workers' compensation, general liability, property, and medical malpractice. And under IT's purview is communications and information technology. The newest, the newest fund, I, I'll call Tim Huntley up to the lectern to discuss briefly with, with.
Good afternoon, Mr. Huntley.
See if I can find the PowerPoint that we. You've already had the introduction by Gene about the change in the accounting system that makes it appear as if we're spending more money than we are because we're showing it really in two different places. But I was asked to provide a little background on this different environment and how the self-funded or, or self-funded insurance program is working. One of the things I want to point out is you will see a difference in the numbers here than what you have in your budget because, for two reasons actually. One, the numbers in the budget reflect the expenses paid by the county. The premium cost includes contributions by the employees. So obviously the dollars here were going to be greater. The second reason is this budget is being enacted obviously for fiscal year ten, eleven, but the numbers I will be giving you are for the calendar year two thousand and eleven because our insurance is on that cycle. The San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority was created two years ago, almost really. We started on it at that time. The main reason that we went down this road was we had evidence that we could get fixed costs. On the one hand, the cost of, of, of claims is the cost of claims. If you have a good plan, it's going to be the same whether you're insured, whether you're in a pool, or whether you're on your own. And in this particular case, we were a member of the CSAC EIA, which had served us well. That's the California State Association of Counties Excess Insurance Authority. But their fixed costs were really way out of line with what we could get locally. And so that first year savings of nine hundred and thirty thousand was the principal reason we were able not to suffer a rate. to suffer a rate increase coming into 2010. That, I would point out that that fixed cost savings continues into 2011, and the CSAC EIA costs are continuing above $74 per employee per month. This is a rate increase history. When we were fully insured, 2006, there was a 24% rate increase. When we joined the pool, it dropped to 10 and then stayed under double digits. That's the good news. The bad news is on a go-forward basis, we're looking in 2011 at a 12.8% increase, and I'll speak to that in a, in a moment. I also wanted to point out that the CSAC pool that we left is looking at an 11.7% increase, but in order to fund that, they're pulling down a 4% from reserves. So that truly means that when the 2012 year comes around, they're going to have a higher base of a 15% higher ongoing cost while we'll still be at the 12.8. Also, obviously, one of the reasons for us to leave is we're able to establish our own pool. This was already covered by Gene, basically, you know, if the sheriff pays motor pool for services and then you buy the cars, those are two separate expenses and it makes your total fiscal activity greater. But that's really been covered. The typical history has been that we take the funding from the departments and we put it into a trust fund and then it goes to the insurance company and whatever is left over, the insurance company keeps. On an internal, as an internal service fund, we are able to keep the unexpended funds in, in our reserves for the future. And in fact, we anticipate at the end of 2010 having over $2 million in reserves on a go-forward basis for the fund. Even though we, we felt and believed that this would be a good thing for us going into the future, we went out and got competitive proposals for a fully insured plan for 2011. That's the best of those willing to quote. The two points, almost 2.8 million would be an additional 14% increase over and above the 12.8 that we're already experiencing. The self-insured, I think the next slide is going to, I want to go back then. One of the things that I think is, is, is important to point out in these numbers is insurance companies establish reserves to protect insurance companies but not to protect the employer. If we were to go into a fully insured plan, which is already more expensive, we would pay 2.35% premium tax on that premium. That would cost the county $528,000 a year just on that premium tax alone. So self-funding programs avoid the premium tax, and we also avoid insurance company profits. The other thing that I want to point out is even though we're a member of the SJVIA and we are self-insured effectively along with Fresno, the purchasing power of our 3,000 employees plus dependents and Tulare, and Fresno County's 6,000 employees plus dependents has enabled us to get that $467,000 savings. Those are fixed cost savings that we accrue by being a member of the larger entity. So, risk analysis. You know, people say, Gus, if you have an insurance company, you're protected. Well, that's true, but I tell you, if you have bad experience, next year, they're going to increase your premiums anyway. Self-insured always has a risk, but it's manageable if you have prudent reserves, and with the SJVIA, the manageable risks increase the purchasing power as we've demonstrated in this particular instance. I would say this, self-funding as opposed to self-insuring, and sometimes we say self-funding because we don't want the state to think that we're self-insured and that we're paying a premium to ourselves because we don't want to pay taxes on it, but self-funding has been around since the mid-'70s and has been successfully used. And the 12.8% premium increase, while disturbing when you look back at the last few years, it's, it's not really significant. And secondly, that is based on principally, that is a result of inflation, medical inflation, which is running at the, the rate of 8% per month. And since we're forecasting into 16 months for the period of 2011, of that 12.8%, 10.7% is attributable simply to the impact of inflationary costs projected into the future. So I would look at it as, all other things considered, about a 2.8% increase. So if I can answer any questions, I would be happy to do so.
Any questions of Tim? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. If there are no questions, approval of the health insurance fund budget is requested.
Call for motion.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Cox, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Okay, operating fund budgets are the core funds that provide services within the county. You know, let me go back a little bit because I'm not sure, Council pointed out that we need to, I need to ask for approval of the internal service funds.
Yes.
Listed as consent budgets at this time.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Cox.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Okay. Operating fund budgets are the core funds that provide services within the county. The equipment debt service fund will be presented separately. The funds are aviation, building debt service, capital projects, child support services, fire, fish and game, health, re-alignment, essentially all the funds outside of the general fund. Indigent healthcare, library, mental health re-alignment, the, one of my least favorite funds, the pension obligation bond fund.
Not much longer.
The road fund, not too much longer, social services re-alignment, tobacco settlement proceeds, and the workforce investment board. The operating funds, individual discussion actions, we'll be talking about with the equipment debt service. As an aside, I want to mention that soon we'll be scheduling a workshop report to your board on capital projects since there have been some, some unofficial shuffling of the, of the deck, so to speak, and projects and an update on the county's capital improvement plan will be coming to your board in the next month or two. So if there are any, if there are no questions, approval of the operating funds that I just listed as consent budgets is requested.
Are there any questions? Just Mr. Cox.
A question, quick comment. I, I look out again over a sea of county employees, Mr. Chair, and realize you opened the beginning of this meeting as a public hearing, but I'm looking for the public. I'm a little, it's hard that we don't have public here wanting to watch over us, make sure we're doing everything correctly. I just wanted, if there are public here, have you remind them that this is a public hearing, they are available, they can comment on any of this at any time. I'm just a little disappointed that we don't have them here.
I'm sure they're listening on the web.
Sure they are.
Okay.
I would motion to approve.
And there's a motion by Mr. Cox to approve, and a second, second motion by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
I want to call your board's attention to some positive information in addition to the goals and accomplishments we talked about earlier. In fiscal 2002, 2003, the equipment debt service fund was established to separately account for capital assets, equipment that are required through long-term payment agreements. In fiscal 2009, 10, the county made its last equipment loan payment, and so there are no requested appropriations for this fund for this fiscal year, saving the county over a quarter million dollars in the annual debt charges that can be reallocated to support other county programs and services. Let's bring that to your attention.
Nice thing to point out.
If there are no questions, approval of the equipment debt service fund is requested at this time.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Shida.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Okay, our final group of budgets comprises the general fund budget. The contingency budget will be handled separately. The funds are the agricultural commissioner, assessor clerk recorder, the auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, register of voters, what a mouthful, board of supervisors, capital acquisitions, central telephone services, the cops program that Mr. Williams discussed earlier, the cooperative extension, county administration, county council, district attorney, gang task force, the multi-agency, agency, the general revenues, general services, Health and Human Services Agency, the Human Resources and Development Agency, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act, miscellaneous administration, miscellaneous criminal justice, probation, public defender, purchasing, resource management agency, rural crime prevention, sheriff, coroner. And again, as I said during my presentation, I, I want to thank and commend the department heads and agency directors for their help in presenting budgets that meet the budget allocations that we, we gave, we gave them. Also, please note that in the near future, we'll be scheduling a presentation to update the board and report to your board on the progress of the new general services division that I mentioned earlier. The consent budgets are fully agreed with the county administrative officer's recommendation, and if there are no questions, they are ready for your approval.
Any questions? This is a little bit like a wedding, you know, you do all this planning and work and effort and then it's over like that, but we know there's just a tremendous amount of effort that goes into this. Okay, and there was a motion by Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
In page 99 of our budget book, there are some, some minor changes to position allocation and classification schedules. There have been some minor changes to some allocations, there's been some reclassifications, development of new classification specifications and compensation within these budgets. I feel like the governor of Arizona. So if there are no questions, your approval of the position allocations, reclassifications, classification specifications, compensation is requested.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shida, seconded by Mr. Cox, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous.
Okay, we're at the point of final actions to balance the general fund budget. Final actions are on page 132, contingency and other changes as needed by the auditor's office in conjunction with my office. If there are no questions, the contingency is ready for your approval as recommended.
Are there any questions? If not, move for approval. Motion by Mr. Ennis.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous.
Okay, as with all budgets, when working with this number of entries and entities, some adjustments may be needed to bring the budget into final balance. We are requesting your authority for the auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget into final balance. The direction authorizations are authorize the auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget into final balance and other direction as needed.
All right, then I call for motion to authorize the auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget into final balance.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
By Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis, cast your votes please, and the votes are unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the final action requested today is a final budget adoption. This action incorporates all the actions taken during the budget hearings and provides for final budget approval. Adoption of the budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the final budget hearings is requested.
Very good.
I would just like to make one comment, you know, I know that this very much seems monotonous and then it's kind of over and over, but I just want to, again, from the board's perspective, commend staff and all the department heads for working with the CAO's office during this process. I know it can be frustrating, especially during times of declining revenues, but I'm glad that you have all come to the table and worked with the CAO's office to come to a resolution and, and work within our means as a county. We all appreciate it as board members, and I just commend you for all that effort and for your hard work during this past year and for the future difficult work that's going to be coming, so thank you.
Yes, I, you know, we, as board members, we have quite a lot of access to information of what's happening in our sister counties around the state, and I can tell you, this is exceptional. In many counties, they are struggling to balance their budgets in ways that we can just not imagine. And so I very much appreciate the action of not all, not only of all of you and the department heads and the elected officials, but also of previous boards of supervisors that have laid the groundwork, that have allowed this county to survive under difficult times and not have to make those kind of draconian cuts, changes to operations that other counties and cities are facing. So these are not easy times for any of us, they're not easy times for our employees, we still have a work furlough that amounts to nearly 2% of lost wages and income. I know many of you are holding open positions and struggling to keep up with workloads, but I must tell you that I'm very, very proud of our county, I'm very proud of you and our, and our staff and our employees, that we're able to continue to provide, I believe, a quality level of service to the people of Tulare County and live within our means, and I think that we're to be commended for that. So, thank you all. And at this time, I would call for the, the final motion.
Thank you. You got one more comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a comment. I'd like to make an observation that some of you in this room have been featured in the newspaper because of your salary and your compensation, and a lot of you, what happens when you're in dire financial times, this is really when you earn your pay. It's really easy to earn your pay when, when the county coffers are full of money. But when we have to cut employees or shift responsibilities to subordinates, it gets to be a very trying experience, not only for the department chairmans and department heads, but also all your supervisors in your different departments. So, thank you for the, for the efforts you put in there. I know that it can be kind of sleepless nights when you have to rearrange staff. So I do commend you, and I think you're all worth every dime you get, so, thank you.
Plus 2%. Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt the budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the final budget hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous.
Okay, thank you for your actions today.
You're very welcome, thank you all for being here. I don't believe we have anything out of close session we need to announce out, do we, Council? So that will conclude our board meeting for today. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you. Thank you.